Our meeting has started, whether we're streamed or not at this point. We need to address the means. We don't have an alternate. We could use an alternate, but we don't have one. But we have a quorum. We do have the minutes of the last meeting, the May 4th, May 18th meeting, to discuss. I did not see anything egregious. Anybody else see anything that needs to be corrected?
Dave, I'm not sure if this meets egregious as the standard, but there's a section, I don't have a copy with numbered lines, but there's a paragraph, probably a third of the way in, that starts, "Further discussion ensued as to intent behind the 750-foot determination." In the next sentence, it says that, I'm speaking in the next sentence. It says, "Mr. Elliott indicated that he remembered the original conversation, and that they factored in," it's missing "access to utilities." That's what was the point. It's access to utilities. And this thing of the following wording has to do with proximity to the remaining industrial zone. So I'm going to recommend that we insert the words "access to utilities" and enter additionally the words "proximity to the remaining industrial zone."
Those are all lines 69 and 70.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other things?
Otherwise, I thought it was consistent with my memory. May not be perfect, but
Nothing trivial, huh?
So I'll recommend that we approve the minutes as they were submitted, or move that we recommend, move that we approve the minutes as they were submitted with those two changes.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Carries five, nothing. Okay, next order of business is to resume the public hearing on the zoning regulations update. Anybody? Did we get any more comments, Mike?
No, you did not receive any comments.
No public comments. Any more updates from the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission discussed their letter, and basically, they said the letter stands as is. They didn't they didn't add anything to the letter. They asked that staff provide the following statement to the zoning commission, that the zoning commission consider adding language to the workforce overlay housing zone specific to neighborhood character. The regs, possibly craft regs, that provide protection to the east versus the west side of Route 10-202. And really, the, they stressed again about the protection of neighborhood character, which is, which is in the plan of conservation development.
Right.
So that's my verbal report to the commission.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on that? Anybody have comments? Have they had comments?
Well, the east versus west, I mean, that all depends on where you are on Route 10. Because normally, what they, they were saying is they were protecting the east side, but that was downtown, but, and the one we have is actually, no, no, I mean, they were protecting the west side. And the one we have is actually on the west side, and it's fine. So I'm not, I think us just staying within the 750 is okay. I wouldn't go left, you know, east and west.
And, you know, modify, to me, modifying the, unless somebody else wants to say something. Getting into the details of the, the housing, workforce housing thing is really the subject of our next few revisions of the regulations. We said we were going to consider the plant, the, the OCD, not the OCD. What am I thinking of?
PAD.
PAD. And, thank you. PAD and the workforce housing in, in detail. And I, I think, given the
The workforce overlay housing zone specific to neighborhood character. The regs, possibly craft regs, that provide protection to the east versus the west side of Route 10-202. And really, the, they stressed again about the protection of neighborhood character, which is, which is in the plan of conservation development.
Right.
So that's my verbal report to the commission.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on that? Anybody have comments? Have they had comments?
Well, the east versus west, I mean, that all depends on where you are on Route 10. Because normally, what they, they were saying is they were protecting the east side, but that was downtown, but, and the one we have is actually, no, no, I mean, they were protecting the west side. And the one we have is actually on the west side, and it's fine. So I'm not, I think us just staying within the 750 is okay. I wouldn't go left, you know, east and west.
And, you know, modify, to me, modifying the, unless somebody else wants to say something. Getting into the details of the, the housing, workforce housing thing is really the subject of our next few revisions of the regulations. We said we were going to consider the plant, the, the OCD, not the OCD. What am I thinking of?
PAD.
PAD. And, thank you. PAD and the workforce housing in, in detail. And I, I think, given the objectives here, opening that up is probably a big delay. That, I think, my own personal opinion is, we shouldn't, shouldn't do that.
And I think Mike will need to make it clear to the Planning Commission that this isn't the end of our revisions. We just targeted a few things. Because, you know, they were saying that we, you know, we hadn't included some of this other stuff that they wanted us to do, but doesn't mean we're done yet.
Agreed. And actually, I, I tried relaying that message. This is phase one of, of several phases that we'll be looking at.
Yeah.
That kind of gave outline too.
Yeah, we had to do some of the things that were kind of critical right now. And, you know, to do a whole revision would, you know, is a little overwhelming all at once. But just the fact that we, you know, what is comprehensive about it is the fact that we rewrote the whole look of it, but now we have to go into the individual pieces, and we haven't done all that.
Right.
Right. Mike, do you have any comments? Anne? We have the choice, I think,
Okay.
of closing the public hearing and voting on the regulations, or leaving it open for another meeting. I don't know what, whether there's another alternative.
Well, I just want to make another comment or two relative to workforce housing before we resolve the meeting, just to make sure that, you know, to clarify the record. The first point is that the record we've created so far says that we discussed relative to this distance from Route 10. We discussed 1,000 feet, and we discussed 750 feet. The fact is, we discussed 2,000 feet too. The initial discussion that was led by Jamie Rabbit focused on 2,000 feet and 10 acres as a, you know, size factor. And 1,000, those were the two, and he marked them on a zoning map and gave them out to us, so there's a sort of a record of that, but there isn't any real detail of the discussion. I think it's, I forget exactly how our discussion ended a couple of weeks ago on the question of whether we should have some minutes or some record of these workshops. I think it's unfortunate that we can't recall with more precision what our records were. I'm not disputing the decision. I'm not suggesting we change it, but I think we had, we gave adequate consideration to this distance thing. And I'm comfortable with the 750 feet, but it was a, at the end of a substantial discussion among, you know, oh, that spread over a couple of nights. And I wondered what happened to the 10, the 10-acre minimum, but that's not in the changes we're proposing now, so we'll take that up another time. So, on to your point of wrapping up this meeting, Dave.
Okay.
Actually, I had a little discussion with Mike, as I was driving down Hoskins. One of the properties that I think would actually work for this is where the old girls dorm used to be, the old girls tobacco bar. Dormitory.
Is that the one that was recently removed?
Yeah, but that property, to me, seems that would, it would work. It's not within 750 feet of Hot Route 10, though.
No, that, that parcel's approximately 1,600 feet from Route 10.
The back edge or the closest edge?
Closest edge. I tried, I tried to measure it every which way to try to get that measurement.
Yeah, there's no perfect number. There's always going to be, what if, what if, you know?
Right, and this is a special case. I mean, they could come in and make some other 830G or some other proposal.
Now, I'm not even sure the property owner is interested, but I'm just trying to identify places that might work.
Yeah.
And then, then we had the three proposals from staff. And I don't think, you know, they quite covered what we were looking for.
Wasn't that for a different program, Kevin?
Which?
The one where there were three or four sites identified for sensor, sensor development, and we picked, we did do the one on Plank Hill.
Well, but it didn't come in under the incentive housing, though. It was called incentive housing back then.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike and I were talking about it. We, we remember kind of like there were six properties we kind of identified.
Right.
We remembered two, so if anyone remembers the other four, you're better than us.
And I think what happened is that the, most of the owners were not interested.
That's correct.
But I think that's another, another discussion which we could take up in the workforce housing details, if we want to address that.
Okay, and then go back to, where is it? To the, the proposed changes to the regs, and do we make the, do we talk about it now? Instead of, after we close the public hearing?
I think we have to close the public hearing, and then we can modify the regulation. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah, you, you could, I, I would say close the public hearing, and then we can discuss, discuss it further.
Okay, we can do that.
Because obviously, it's your, you know, unless, well, Kevin, what, what exact, what changes are you?
Well, I was just gonna, we were just talking about it and saying, you know, one property line must be within 750 square feet of Route 10, rather than the whole property or the the street access one, whatever it was. I'm trying to find.
Yeah.
The memo.
So you have, yeah, so you can't, because I have a memo, because I, I sent a memo to the file, to the, I mean, to the file, to the commission.
When was that?
Okay.
I, I apologize. It came out late this afternoon.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Six seventeen.
Yeah, so it, it'll, it gives you the ability, we could discuss this after the close of the public hearing with the options.
Okay.
And those are just meant to, for conversation starters, based on our, based on the discussion two weeks ago.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and close the public hearing? Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we close the public hearing on application. I don't have it up. Anybody got it up?
Twenty dash oh six.
Twenty dash oh six.
I'll second that.
Second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That proposed, that passes five, nothing. Okay, now, the next order of business is we can take up the a matter of approving the regulations and make a motion and set a date for when they would be effective. I do think that we need a motion, I guess, to do that, and then, or at least, maybe we should have the discussion of the modification first.
I agree.
And?
And, does everybody have his memo? Can you see it?
No, I don't. I didn't see it.
It comes in upside down.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to review that memo with the commission?
Sure.
This way. So I, I give, I give the commission three options. Option A would be that all the developments to be approved under this section shall be located entirely within a linear distance of 750 feet from Hop Meadow Street. Option B, in order for a property to be considered, considered, the parcels frontage along a public street shall be located entirely within a linear distance of 750 feet of the, of Hop Meadow Street. And the last one is doing nothing and keeping the existing language, which is, the subject property shall be located within a distance of 750 feet of Hop Meadow Street. You can modify any of these options. It does not have to be specific to what I, what, what staff provided you as language. It's, like I said, it's just meant to, meant to be, capture some of the conversation from, from the public hearing and provide options to the commission.
Okay, on option A and B, does the existing sunlight construction project, is that non-conforming under both of them?
It wouldn't be. Because the whole property's not within 750 feet.
Right, but A, option B is the frontage, which I think is just a small patch along Hoskins. You're muted, Mike.
It's two patches on Hoskins, Dave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Houses in there, yeah.
So, in both cases, it's non-conforming? A? I'm looking at Mike.
Yes, yes, so both cases, it would be considered non-conforming on that. The option C would be the one that keeps it conforming, however, you know, one of the, one of the things you could add is language that, you know, the closest property line shall be within 750 feet of Hop Meadow Street. That would, that would keep that one conforming in, in the, from the, the regulations.
That would make me feel better. I don't know about the rest of you guys.
Yeah, no, that's what I was saying. You need to mention property line, because it was, you know, what they, the Planning Commission question was with the, within a distance of 750 feet, and they weren't sure if that meant the whole property or not, so I think we do need to clarify it by saying, you know, one property line must be within 750 feet of Route 10.
Right, I think that's, in my mind, that's sufficient.
Does that mean any part of the property line?
Yes.
Yes, right.
Okay. Anne? You're muted. She's still muted.
Still muted.
Yeah. And you need to push the button on your computer somewhere. On the screen, you need to click on, there's an icon for unmute. There's a microphone with a
Flash.
Yeah, there's a microphone that has.
There you go.
How that gets muted. Okay, I'm sorry. I've done that before. I apologize.
Okay. So we, we, do we want to vote on language to be added? Or to be changed?
Yes.
So let's, Kevin, you want to read that? The subject property line shall be any?
Okay, I'm, I'm, all right, one property line of the subject property must be.
At least one, yeah.
Yeah.
It's at least one.
Yeah.
At least one.
At least one property line of the subject property must be within 750 feet of Route 10 slash Hop Meadow Street.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We're voting on the language to replace the existing property line language in the zoning regs. Any further discussion?
No.
Everybody agree on it? Mike?
Well, I, I just, you know, the Planning Commission did point out the fact that we weren't talking about existing neighborhoods, historic places, distinction between the various areas along Hop Meadow Street, or whether it would be east or west. Do we want to try and address that in here, or is that phase two?
I think that's the, in my opinion, that's the workforce housing overlay consideration that goes along with.
The rework of the whole WHOZ?
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be simple.
No.
No, but I think, yeah.
I'd like to get these changes done, and then we can readdress.
Let's not lose sight of the fact, though, that our, our language compels consideration for workforce housing in the center in particular, compliance with the center code is a requirement. And also, there needs to be compliance with the DRB, Community Development Standards. And then it has to also comply with the standards that we articulate in this regulation, which I'm surprised, the more I look at it, the more I'm wondering how a form-based zoning configuration got into our, our regulations, but I'm, I'm all for it. So, you know, I understand the, the angst that, that the Planning Commission numbers express, but I think for now, they're, they're, they're not, don't feel like they're not addressed. I think there's a distinction between, you know, how fully a certain facets of it might have been addressed, but there's a lot to, to use to articulate a framework that's acceptable, or would be approvable for workforce housing, so there's a, a lot. And so, I think it's a great challenge for a developer who sees that opportunity as something they want to pursue. They have a, you know, a pretty high hill in front of them already.
Okay, any other discussion? Anybody want to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five to nothing, the language change carries. Shall we have a motion to to approve the new proposed zoning regulations?
Mr. Chairman, as someone, if someone were to make a motion, I would suggest also adding language that an effective date be Monday, June 29th, 2020. That'll get us outside of the appeal period.
Okay.
Did you give us a, a motion, Mike?
No, I did not.
No, not even last time? Okay.
No, just, since this is really, it's, it's, you know, the commission's app, application, and we've made the one motion on changing the language there, really, the only thing specific to this would be setting an effective date. Unless you had other, you, unless you had other changes.
Is that a question or a comment? Do we have other changes? I don't recall.
Hopefully not.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, do you want the motion, Dave? I'll, I'll read the, okay. I, I move that we approve application 20-06 of Mike Glidden, CFM, CZEO, Director of Planning of Comprehensive Rewrite and Reorganization of Zoning Regulations with new sections pertaining to home occupation, Section 3.5, Site Plan Approval, Section 11, Special Permit Criteria, Section 12, and Agritourism, Section 8.5, with an effective date of the new regulations to be Monday, June 29th, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? None? Okay, it carries five, nothing. And five is enough to
Right.
override the negative referral. Okay, thank you, guys.
But I do think we still need to make it clear to planning that we're, you know, we haven't, we're not ignoring them, but that we can address some of their other things at a later time.
Right. But they, remember, they, the workforce housing as it exists, the only change we really made was the restricting to the 750 feet. The rest of the workforce housing was approved by the zoning commission and was given a very detailed positive referral in April 2013. So, you know, we are, I think, paying attention to them.
Yeah, this is a better solution than just leaving it out there with, with no restriction, and, you know, which we did.
Sure.
Remember, we put it on
Moratorium.
A moratorium for a while, and then that went off, and then we were wide open, so this is better than being wide open.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, anything else tonight, Mike?
So, your next meeting, you will have, we have at least one public, two public hearings coming for special exceptions for change of use. I also, you will have a referral from the Board of Selectmen concerning open space and a preliminary discussion which is directly related to that open space purchase. That's what I have so far for you.
Okay.
I'll have a, I'll have a more detailed update for you also of temporary outdoor dining. As of this morning, we have about 12 locations in town that have been approved for temporary outdoor dining. I apologize, we were dealing with an issue related to one of the establishments. That's the only reason why I didn't have a report for you this evening. I didn't want to tell you we had 12 and really only have 11. So, but everything so far is, everyone seems to be following, following the sector rules from the governor, et cetera. So, and I'll provide more. I don't know if anyone saw, there was a tent going up this afternoon at Sinnesbury Town Shops for popovers. That's going to be your first larger one in, in a parking lot with some barriers that have been approved by the fire marshal, so there's, like I said, 12 places have, have taken advantage of the ability to have temporary outdoor dining.
Did you have any that you couldn't accommodate?
Uh, so far, we've been able to work with people and find solutions that upset their needs and meet the sector requirements. We have not had, well, I shouldn't say that. There's one establishment, we've had, we had issues with what they wanted to approve initially, but we've made the message clear that their submission had to be revised due to safety concerns.
Okay. We have.
No appeals come, no appeals coming to this board. That's the other question.
Okay.
Okay. On the open space, you sent a memo out. I think you sent it to everyone. We got asked to weigh in on this proposed open space purchase. I don't understand whether, we've been asked to to discuss it, but only the Planning Commission has a, a real official referral, as I understand it.
So, so the Board of Selectmen forwarded to this commission too, because when Meadowwood was approved, a site plan was approved associated with that subdivision. They developed, they did a zone change, they did a site plan along with the subdivision. So that's why it's coming to the, that referral will, will be discussed in two weeks with this commission, because you did have, had an approval that's still valid for another two years, or, yes, two years.
And are we going to get copies of those documents, Mike? I mean?
Yes, yes, I'll have more information along with, we have a, I'll, I'll provide the presentation that is being shared with all the commissions, but really, right now, the, the first board that's going to get a full view of the referral is going to be Open Space tomorrow night, and then you, you will get it after the then you you will get it after they get their referral first.
And who's leading the presentation and the discussion?
Staff will provide a lot of the background. The Trust for Public Lands will be present at the meeting along with Representative Representative Griffin Land, because they are going to also have a preliminary discussion with you. And we'll, we'll, I don't want to ruin all the surprise for two weeks, but they're going to be, they're as as part of this open space purchase, they'll be coming in to discuss potential resubmission for an extension of the permits of two years while these, a lot of these grant negotiations and applications are occurring. But they'll, they'll present you more information in two weeks. I don't want to ruin yours.
The prizes aren't good.
Yeah, well, that's why, at least, you know what's coming, so it's not too much of a surprise.
Okay, the other thing is, Anne can only be at the meeting until
But I can be, yeah, I can be at the meeting from four thirty to five thirty. But at five thirty, I've got to jump off because I've got a six o'clock appointment.
Okay.
I didn't know if someone else might want to, you know, attend in my place or want to jump on at about five thirty.
It's also true that we're going to see the same thing in, you know, a week, right? In two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay. Does anybody want to go to that meeting tomorrow?
I can jump in on it tomorrow.
Okay.
Why would you do that? It's the same we're going to do in two weeks, right?
I get a jump on it.
Oh, okay. We want you to be in the know, Mike, and and be on top of it.
I'm just such a slow learner. I just need to be exposed to it over time.
Okay.
It's already been attached to the selectman meeting, so all the presentations are already out there.
Yeah.
The materials are pretty well known. Okay, anything, any other things that we need to discuss?
We talked about those restaurants earlier, and I would encourage you all, if you aren't already, going and supporting our local restaurants, because many, not all of them are all struggling. So this is my personal P S A to plea to all of you to go out and support our local restaurants, please.
I agree with that. And I've been trying.
Me, too.
Okay.
Get people comfortable about going outside again.
You got to warm up some, Mike.
Ah, it was beautiful this weekend. There was no excuse this weekend.
That's true. It's supposed to be eighty on Friday this week, so.
It's coming. It's coming again. So I look forward to seeing you all, and I will be checking.
Good. I think it's time for a motion, Kevin.
Okay.
Do you want to move to adjourn?
Yeah, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries five nothing. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.